Mm-hmm.
I did.
Yeah.
Good evening and welcome. The July 23rd, 2025 council meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Assis?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now read the mission statement for the city council. The Long Branch mayor, city council, and administration are committed to cultivating an environment of mutual trust and respect that values the diversity of our community. We will strive to enhance the quality of life for all who live here by making Long Branch a desirable place in which to live and prosper. We will treat all members of the public with respect and expect the same in return. Certification, please.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the July 9th, 2025 meeting.
So move second.
Roll call.
Mr. Assis?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of ordinances, there are none for tonight, and there are no ordinances for introduction, and so that means we're going to move directly to the public participation part for all comments and resolutions, and I will read the statement for making a public comment. I need a motion to open the portion, the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The public portion of the meeting is to allow you, the public, to state your comments directly to the administration and have a voice in the proceedings of your governing body. There will be no cross dialogue during the public portion of the meeting. After you have spoken, any member of the dais authorized to speak for the adminis-- on the administration's behalf may address your comments, answer questions, and correct any misleading or erroneous information. If there's anyone in the audience who has a comment to make, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once. Anyone from the public who wants to further discuss any other comments or concerns, please call the city clerk's office at 732-571-5686 to schedule a time at the public council hours that are held the first Wednesday of every month. Anyone who has a comment, please step forward.
Mayor and council, my name is Rosemary Mango. I live at 10 Pavilion Avenue in Long Branch. I have copies of what I'd like to address with you, but not enough, so you might want to spread them around. The issue I have to discuss is bicycles on sidewalks in the city. It's 119-5. There have been numerous occasions, I don't need to go through them, and in fact, today I almost got run over walking my dog. There's a problem that's multifaceted, and that is sidewalks are designed for pedestrians, but the roadways endanger cyclists, so the cyclists come on the sidewalks and endanger people. I don't know a solution for that, but it seems that there should be a separation somehow. But what I would like to address is education that might curb the problem a little bit. I have stopped and spoken to officers and specials, and they've told me that they either didn't know about the ordinance or that they were directed to address bicycles on the boardwalk, not the sidewalk. So if we educate the officers, it would be helpful, the specials and the summer help. But also, there are no signs that directly say, "No bicycles on the sidewalk," so it's kind of assumed that it's children, but the worst people that I've encountered were adults. Maybe we could educate through the school system, but signage would really help on Ocean Avenue, but I almost got hit on Brighton Avenue a week ago. So I would appreciate if something were done, and education, I think, would be a big help.
So Rosemary, it's night.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're done, Rosemary?
I'm done.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, and you want to?
No, yeah, I just want to say it's nice to me. I didn't realize, because I know we've talked on the phone several times. But I did talk to Mr. Shirley here, maybe Charlie, if you could talk about it a little after we spoke two weeks ago.
So I was away last week, but I did speak with the gentleman in charge of the specials, and he is going to be pushing it out. Actually, you put the same verbiage in the email, so I sent it to him and asked him to make sure that everyone is trained up on it, but we'll take a look at doing some signs, especially at the entry points, at least, you know, so people know before getting there.
Signage would help, and there's already signed posts that you just?
Yep.
Put it up there. Knowing about it is half the battle, I think.
Yep, I'll let them look at it tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go next, because my topic is the same. My name's Harry Delane. I live at 448 Ocean Avenue behind Max's. Before I jump into the part around public safety, I want to say thank you to the council for the investment you made in having a pride ceremony. I spoke to Mayor Palone at the event, and I think it was important to emphasize the impact that you have by doing stuff like that, that you might not see based on the attendance at the event. I moved here 33 years ago from Tom's River to escape all the conservatism and to come out. So seeing an event like that in Long Branch underscores the city's commitment to having a diverse community, and I think it's important to recognize that there's some kid somewhere or some person somewhere that didn't go to it but saw that the city did it, and that's going to make all the difference in your life. So I thank you very much for that. First, I want to say thank you for, in terms of public safety, for your response to the shooting on the beach. I recognize that everyone in my family is a cop, my father, all my brothers. So I recognize the impact that must have had on public safety in the town, and I'm really appreciative of how you responded to it, so thank you for that. In terms of public safety, I wanted to address both Ocean Boulevard and Ocean Avenue, and I wanted to be informed about the ideas and the approaches to thinking about public safety in roadways and sidewalks before I came in, and there's three things that I thought are really important. So education about what the laws are, prevention through signage and other barriers and stuff like that, and then enforcement. So I want to touch on each one of those. Before I do that, I want to share my experience as well. I walk every day along the boardwalk on the closed part of Ocean Avenue, because that's where I live, and the number of speeding 12-year-olds is unreal. And I've stopped folks, I've stopped them and called the police, and the police have responded very thoughtfully, but it's just this short of lawless in terms of that. And I recognize the challenges of trying to chase down a 12-year-old and get their parents and all that kind of stuff, but I don't see a whole lot of action on that. Their experience, so I've had the same thing where walking my dog, that someone comes speeding along, and it's unclear where I'm supposed to be or where they're supposed to be, because they can't, neither one of us can be in the boardwalk, and there's someone coming this way, someone going that way, I've got a dog on a leash, and it's a recipe for disaster, and I'm, you know, we're fortunate that we haven't had accidents yet. I've also had at least two experiences this summer so far where I've stopped to allow pedestrians to cross in front of me, and the car next to me in the fast lane has sped past. And the most recent one was with a family that was crossing, mother, father, two kids, and a kid in a stroller. And the only reason they got killed is because I put my arm out and honked like crazy. And the same thing has happened a number of times in different configurations. So I think we dodged a bullet for now, excuse the phrase in context, but we're, there's a disaster waiting to happen, in my opinion. So when I think about education about this, education about the laws, so, you know, I recognize that there's the flyers that the city has out here, and it's gone out in the email blast, and I'm a high-information consumer, and this is inefficient, in my opinion. It's ineffective, in my opinion, because the people who need to see it are probably not reading the email blast, which is a very analog way of communicating stuff with residents, and they're certainly not coming here and pulling up the flyers. So I think education is an opportunity, maybe it's having the special ones stand out there, they're stopping the folks that are riding their e-bikes, and they're adults doing it, too. And, you know, and doing some on-the-spot education. I think that's an opportunity, just off the top of my head. In terms of prevention, the city does have signs that say pedestrian cross with those, you know, the arrow going down, and there are zebra stripes in some places, but not everywhere where people cross. And what I haven't seen from Long Branch is the seasonal response to the increase in traffic and pedestrian and vehicle that I see in all the other neighboring towns. That includes having cones out on the side of the road to kind of, towards the road, to take the driver's attention, that they see something that's not there normally, so they can think about, okay, I'm seeing two.
Five minutes.
Okay. All right, I'll stop.
Harry, I'm sorry that your time ran out. Your comments are obviously very thoughtful. Let me see if there's anybody on the dais that wants to respond.
Just so you can stay, I'll give you my pardon, we can have a conversation offline.
Okay, I'd like to hear the council's thoughts on it, though, in terms of what we're going to do as opposed to just you and I having a conversation offline, but I will do that, thank you. Because anyway, I heard your response to the woman who spoke before me. It sounded a little transactional, to be honest, that you're going to talk to the specials about doing that, but I think there's a much bigger picture, and doing a little tactical intervention is not addressing the systemic issue. So I'd like to hear from the council on that.
Okay, well, the business administrator will get back to you on that. One thing I want to, just in terms of my comment, and I also do want to be mindful of the way we want this part of the meeting to run.
Yeah, okay.
You know, but, so, the idea of education that was brought up before, and you brought it up, we have brought it up several times, and I think it's something for us to keep on the agenda in terms of how people get information and how we can make that effective. So just, that's my comment for it, and then I'll leave the rest for the business administrator.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It'd be great if we could share some stats on enforcement efforts at the next meeting, like how many tickets have been given out, all that kind of stuff. That'd be great if we could hear that, but I'll speak with you afterwards.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor Palone and City Council. My name is Coltricott, and I reside at 69 Oakwood Avenue. I have two topics I want to briefly bring to light. Number one, I hear there might be paving Oakwood Avenue, and unfortunately, speeding is still alive and well on Oakwood Avenue, and I appreciate the efforts of our police force in the past, I guess, five, six years, several years, with putting speed monitors up there and trying, you know, also doing radar, but I know, just because I read the newspaper, I'm up to speed, the police department has better things to do than sit on Oakwood Avenue and do monitor and pull people over occasionally if they can. They have a lot of other things on their plate. All I'm going to say is we need a permanent deterrence for speeding, and it's not just on Oakwood Avenue. I drive around Long Branch, and I notice a lot of people don't like to obey speed limits, and that's all I'm going to say on that. So we need to take a look at that. Number two, I received a notice roughly two weeks ago about plans on the west Long Branch side of Oakwood Avenue to build a synagogue on the top of what is presently 90 Oakwood Avenue on the west Long Branch side. They want to raise the building, and they want to put a synagogue. Now, I don't care if they put a Catholic church, a Presbyterian, Baptist, whatever, it doesn't matter. I don't think a church or a synagogue belongs in that area. I don't think there's enough space, and once again, you know, they're going to pave Oakwood Avenue eventually, hopefully, but right now, there's a few bumps in the road that slow people down. Once that road gets nice and smooth, and putting in perspective, if there is going to be a synagogue at the top of the hill, that could be a problem, as well as the fact that a lot of my neighbors on the Long Branch side are concerned, and one of the questions I have, although this is the planning board and the city council of west Long Branch, since it's a dual municipality road, does Long Branch, the city of Long Branch, have any bona fide position about what's going to happen on the other side of the street? Because, I mean, obviously, it's not all west Long Branch's road, it's two cities. So, you know, putting that in perspective, I'm concerned on behalf of my neighbors who, you know, basically designated me to show up, you know, basically, we just want to see if Long Branch has any input with the west Long Branch people as far as the city council, planning board, blah, blah, blah. And number three, after putting that aside, is I agree with the last participant. I'm an avid bicycle rider, and when I come up along the ocean where we have Rooney's and everything, I notice a lot of people on these e-bikes, young kids are flying through there, and these e-bikes can go up to 25 miles an hour, and the average e-bike is yo-big or yo-high, and you've got little kids sometimes roaming around. God forbid, a little kid roams out into bicycle path, and some kid on an e-bike comes flying and hits the kid in the head, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, I don't know what the solution is, but we need to slow people down with the e-bikes, at least where we have a lot of pedestrians, so we don't have any accidents. And that's basically it. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, anyone to respond?
Requesting one-minute notification. Vincent Lepore, 33 Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. This council has some nerve being here tonight. You really do. You're a disgrace to this city. Notwithstanding, you're an accomplice to a government of thuggery, extortion, and criminality, leaving innocent victims in the wake. On Friday, July 18th, the residents of west Long Branch were on the receiving end of an attack by the government of Long Branch. The Long Branch government noticed the west Long Branch Fire Department that the Long Branch Fire Department will no longer respond to any quote, "high hazard situations," end quote, in west Long Branch. This unilateral attack by the government of Long Branch rendered the residents of west Long Branch with life-threatening endangerment. Long Branch's attempt at racketeering the west Long Branch Fire Department was defeated on the prior day of Thursday, July 17th, when the government of west Long Branch, via the fire chiefs, notified Long Branch that it will not consider any bartering of the west Long Branch fire truck, nor consider any alternative staffing by the Long Branch Fire Department. West Long Branch will remain a volunteer fire department. The sinister attempt by the Long Branch City Council to circumvent a referendum, as was the will of west Long Branch residents, circumventing by doing a fallaciously proposed memorandum of understanding involving the west Long Branch Fire Department, failed. I will repeat, Long Branch failed. The jurisdiction of west Long Branch, with its residents, mayor, council, and fire chiefs, prevailed in defeating the hostile takeover attempt by Long Branch and succeeded in maintaining the sovereignty of the west Long Branch Fire Department. To the residents of west Long Branch, be assured, measures are already being implemented to further secure the fire safety of west Long Branch. The fact is, by county-mandated mutual aid, both the Ocean Township and Eaton Town Fire Departments respond to 100% of your fire calls at no cost to the residents of west Long Branch. Both Long Branch residents and many Long Branch, as well as west Long Branch residents, support the recent decision of west Long Branch's government, and together, we will work to assure west Long Branch's fire safety. And lastly, and most importantly, on this matter and other issues, both Long Branch and west Long Branch residents are deeply indebted to the social engines of the west End Long Branch NJ Watch Dogs Facebook, known as the Watch Dogs, and also the west Long Branch Residents Facebook. Both have delivered a coverage of this west Long Branch Fire Department matter, along with other important issues where conventional media has miserably failed. To the administrators and members of the Watch Dogs and the west Long Branch residents, thank you for your speed, diligence.
One-minute notification.
And thoroughness in informing. To the west Long Branch residents, you fought at your council meetings, your council and mayor listened, the fire chiefs listened, this is your victory. Keep fighting, keep your guard up, and keep fighting. As far as how the west Long Branch government is going to handle this city council, that's their priority, but I am fully aware of how many residents of west Long Branch are going to be dealing with this city council and this city council's junk government.
Thank you, Mr. Lepore. Would anyone care to respond?
Yeah, if I could. So obviously, Chair, as you know, this has been going on for a while. The real story behind this is, I was invited to a west Long Branch council meeting on May 21st, and the reason for that was west Long Branch invited me because the week prior to that, they had two significant incidents that they felt they were having inadequate fire response from their fire department, one of which, their elementary school children were left outside for over a half hour, and no fire response happened, and the superintendent of the school and the other school administrators were extremely upset with the fact that there was no response to that. Within the same week, there were two other incidents where no one went to a dormitory fire alarm at Monmouth University. So we're dealing with things that, you know, Mr. Lepore referred to high hazards. The high hazards he's referring to are, you know, school buildings, public buildings, dormitories, these types of buildings. So as we were having the conversation, talks were being had over how much would it cost for us to respond there, what other options were there, and keep in mind, in today's day and age with taxes and budgets, it would cost west Long Branch residents somewhere between $400,000 and $500,000 a year to pay us to respond there. So with that being said, I'm not sure that any tax base of that size could absorb that. Talks happened about, they knew we were up to buying a new fire truck, they have one that is not being used to its full potential, and so to work with them, we had a conversation about, okay, well, since you purchased it already, let's do a formula between your finance committee and our finance officer, and come up with something of what we thought would work out. That number, their truck is probably, you know, at the time, worth 1.2, 1.3 million, and we came up with the formula trying to, you know, extend Olive Branch to a smaller town and help them, that we would give them 10 years' worth of service for a trade of this truck. Our guys would respond in all jurisdictions, ours and theirs, with the truck, and we would handle all these. One of the concerns, because of how recent it happened with the school lack of response by west Long Branch, they asked me, would you, while we're working these details out, would you consider responding just so we know the kids are safe? And I said, you know what, as long as we're moving forward, as long as the MOUs are being drafted, and as long as I know that this process is moving forward, we will start doing it. The next day, I had our career fire captain reach out to the Monmouth County radio room, and this is something that hasn't been done forever. It makes, he's making it sound like we've responded to these hazards forever, we have not. So for the first time ever, we agreed to, on the first alarm, first bell, our fire department would just go to the schools, to the dorms, and we would start heading there. After that happened, there was a whole process that happened, there were a few speed bumps where, you know, I saw the council meetings, a bunch of, you know, social media trolls trashing the deal, and I said, no, we're not going to, we're not going to back away from this, you guys have time, until I hear officially from you, we won't do any of this. So it wasn't until I was officially notified by a council person, not by the fire department, as he said, a council person contacted me and said, listen, we've decided, because of all this social media and different members, that we are not going to move forward with this, and I said to him, okay, but understand that, you know, I extended this Olive Branch for this response to your high hazards, I cannot take city taxpayer money and keep responding when there's no deal in place and you're telling me it's not going to happen. So the next day, same exact process, and keep in mind, this is less than 60 days that we've been covering them, it's probably under 15 calls total. And what happened was, I contacted our career captain and said, reverse what we did, the deal's off, and I can't be using taxpayer funds and taxpayer resources to respond into another jurisdiction, and all of the council, I spoke with three of them, all understood that, no, that was the deal, you said that it was a temporary thing, as long as we move forward, we're not moving forward anymore, and that's, you know, kind of how it's going to end. You know, one of the things I just want to mention is that, you know, we're constantly being questioned by residents and people of, you know, what are we doing to lower taxes, what are we doing to do things differently? Well, here's a situation where we saw something, where we need a fire truck, they have one, they're unable to use it adequately, and this is something that would save us from bonding to $2.5 million, and we just thought that was good, but instead of putting that in a positive light and getting the responses the way that they should be, you know, this is what happens. Mr. Lepore jumps all over it, and, you know, in his mind crushes a deal that was bad, but the truth is, it was a great deal for west Long Branch, they're going to need response sometime in the future, and for us, you know, obviously, it worked out to, we wouldn't have to bond. So it wasn't a one-way deal, it was, it was good for both people, you know, and I just want to say, like, because I'm watching what's happening on social media, and I want to explain that, you know, if you saw, there was a very one-sided attack on this thing, and it's because the people that are involved in the Long Branch Fire Department, especially the career professionals, we had a sit-down about this, and I said, listen, we cannot sink to the level of these trolls on the internet, you need to be professional, you need to do the right thing, and not engage in these kind of conversations, and I just want to say that I'm proud of all of them, they didn't, and it's hard for them, because they see, they know the truth, and anyone that's really interested in this process or interested in what's going on, you know, I implore you to take a look, follow our fire department and see when, when they get out of the fire alarm call, you're going to have a career staff of guys that are fully dressed, fully equipped, with pre-assigned assignments that know exactly what they're doing, get to the task, you know, opposed to one guy rolling out in an SUV and getting out in Crocs and a t-shirt, you know, to respond to a fire call. We're trying to do the right thing, we're trying to make the entire area safer, it didn't work out, and that's fine, but to, you know, say that we're upset about it or we did something wrong is absolutely a misclassification would happen. We tried our best, it didn't work, and that's fine, we're fine with it. Just wanted to clarify what happened.
Yeah, good. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Beaver, 434 Long Branch Avenue. Just quick, going to go over what everyone else has said about the e-bikes, they're going crazy. Because now they want to pull wheelies, wheelie's going down Broadway, Long Branch Avenue, and it's getting crazy. There was one going down the sidewalk at a high rate of speed. If they hit somebody, guaranteed, that person would have been in ICU. I mean, it was that fast, it was just a fast bike, but bicycles in general, they've got to be on the right side of the road, they're on the wrong side of the road, they're riding on the sidewalk, they shouldn't be on the sidewalk, and I know it goes back, but somehow, we've got to get it out there. And just the other thing, what was just being spoken about, I really stayed out of the thing with the fire truck, because I, honest to God, didn't know a whole lot about it, but I will tell Mrs. Shirley, if it was explained maybe openly, maybe people would understand, because honestly, things I'm hearing, then I came up here, and I've, honest to God, have switched gears on that. I mean, just now, but I get it. just now. But I get it. I work that side too. So, you know, I work both sides of the fence, so I get it. I really do. But if we need a ladder, we have a surplus, don't we? Can we use that? I don't know.
We're proud of yours, Council.
I don't know. We'll see.
Yep.
That's it.
Thanks, Scott.
Anyone else? Okay. I need a motion to close the public participation portion of the meeting.
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, I'll ask Madam Clerk if there are any changes to the list of resolutions.
No changes have been made.
Okay, thank you. We can take the listed resolutions as the consent agenda. I need a motion.
Some move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Rassus?
Yes.
Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Ms. Dangler?
Yes.
Doctor Voat?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. There are no applications tonight, and so we're going to move to miscellaneous business for the good of the order. And we are going to start with Councilman Rassus.
Thank you, Council President Voat. I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. It's always nice to hear your concerns. I'm a bike rider. I'm always around the oceanfront. And I understand your concerns fully. Hopefully, we can find a resolution for this. It's nice again to see everyone and wish everyone a nice week and looking forward to seeing everyone in two weeks.
Thank you, Councilman Rassus. And now, Councilman Vera.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out tonight. I really understand where points and your concerns are. I know where you man, when you put your hand out and slowing down. I happened to meet you on Ocean Boulevard in Matilda. And we stopped for one lane, and then the other car comes speeding. I know your concerns. This council up here and this mayor administration, it's our priorities for safety. That's been being discussed with us, with the e-bikes. There's nothing that we've been discussing. It's, Charlie, the public safety is on top of that. It's not as easy as trying to chase a 12-year-old with an e-bike. It's not easy. You know what I mean? You can't foresee this safety that goes with that. So, you know, we try to stay out. We'll leave it to the safety department for that. But it is being discussed. And you're right, bicycles on the sidewalks, you know, there's an ordinance, there's no bikes on the sidewalks, and there's a lot of adults riding them. We just can't have officers everywhere that is catching them in place. And I'm pretty sure that we'll educate them like you asked us to educate them. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Vera. And now, Councilwoman Wittes.
Thank you for your comments this evening. And like Mr. Vera said, we have been discussing all these issues. And I myself witnessed someone flying by an Ocean Boulevard when someone was trying to cross. And it's a very scary situation. And we need to, you know, address it sooner rather than later, because it could be very fatal at some point. And we'd like to thank you all for your comments and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wittes. And it's President Dangler.
Good evening. In regards to the bike safety, whether e-bikes or just regular bikes, like everyone else, we have seen, certainly the e-bikes, they're out of control in regards to the speed that they're going, almost no matter what street it is, or if it's down on Ocean Ave. We are certainly, as everyone said, looking into it. And we're trying to figure out what's the best way, other than just to say, you know, put a sign up, you know, what the speed limit is, so on and so forth. But safety-wise, that's... And I do agree that everyone, because myself, I don't, I'm not big on social media at all. So, to put it out on social media is good, but there are those of us who really could care less about social media. So, we have to figure out another way to get the word out. In regards to, like, I don't want to say transparency, but I'll just use that word. When, I don't know what the best way would have been in regards to the West Long Branch and Long Branch negotiations. But during my time in the union and being on the other side of negotiations, when I was on the Board of Ed, when you're in negotiations, you don't really put everything out until you get some type of an agreement. But certainly, I don't believe that it was any way trying to hide what was going on until we knew exactly what we were going to do. And former Officer Beaver, I believe?
Beaver.
Is this your last name?
Yes. Yes, Scott.
Eventually, we're going to have to get a truck somehow. We will, because we're going Long Branch, not for anything else, other than this city is getting bigger and our truck is, the truck, one is getting obsolete. So, we eventually are going to have to get one. And now, on another note, a little concerning for me personally, it's been discussed with a few people in town, that I have something personal against one of the businesses that are, that's taking place here in Long Branch. Yes, I have asked questions about the particular business. I don't know the people who run the business. But if you're running a business in a zone, in an area that is not zoned for the type of business that they're running, that is the only personal thing that I have. If you are, if it's in with, what it's zoned for, if it's in residential district and you're not zoned for that type of business, I'm going to ask questions. Now, I ask it in executive session, but it didn't stay there, because a couple people came up to me and wanted to know, what do I have against that particular company? I was told that the company, other people who run the company are very good, nice people, decent people, so on and so forth. But I've never even met them. So, I have nothing against any business in Long Branch, as long as it's legal and as long as it's done the way it's supposed to be done. Fill out the paperwork. If you're approved, I have nothing, no questions. But if it's not approved and you keep doing what you're doing well, then I'm going to keep asking the question, whether it be in executive session or publicly. So, I just wanted to put that out there, that I personally do not have anything against any business that is legally run in Long Branch. It's not personal for me. It's just follow the ordinance, follow the zoning laws, and everything will be okay. Thank you very much. And please enjoy the rest of the summer. Be safe, and God bless you.
Thank you, Councilman Dangler. And Mayor Pullen.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening. I appreciate all of your comments. And I want to say that, you know, whether you're here in person or send us an email or a phone call, we take all of your comments very serious. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of challenges, but we take them seriously. We try to address as many as we can, and we'll always continue to do so. So, again, thank you for being here. There is something I would like to say, though. A lot of people haven't taken advantage of it, but since we came into office, I know that sometimes it's hard, like, to just, you know, we obviously have to have some sort of time limit here in a public forum. And obviously, there's a mission statement that the council president reads. But I just want to let everybody know that we do and always have had what we call council office hours, which are on the first Wednesday of the month. And what you need to do is, you can talk at any length. I think the city clerk, they're scheduled every half hour, right? So, anyone, if you just call the clerk by the Friday before the next first Wednesday of the month, what we do is, we try to get at least two council members together, because that's the limit we can do. I'm certainly always available to come. And whatever the issue is, we would make sure, if it's a law enforcement issue, or recreation, or DPW. But I just want to let you know, and then you could have a more, you know, extensive personal conversation. So, again, that's the first Wednesday of every month. And if you just call by the Friday before, correct? So, take advantage of that, because we've had that for the last seven years, but not too many people call on it, every now and then. Okay. And then, the, so I just had a couple announcements that I wanted to talk about for the Bruce Springsteen fans here. We're very excited to announce that the Long Branch Arts and Cultural Center, in collaboration with the Bruce Springsteen Archives and Center for American Music and Monmouth University, we're going to be having a one-of-a-kind Bruce Springsteen in Long Branch exhibit. For those who don't know, this exhibit focuses on Bruce Springsteen's breakout album, Born to Run, which actually, he wrote in its entirety here when he was living in the city of Long Branch. It'll feature unique and special history that Bruce Springsteen has to the city of Long Branch. The exhibit is set to open in mid-August. Born to Run, by the way, is celebrating the 50th anniversary next month. And the exhibit is set to open, like I said, in mid-August. For more information, please reach out to Maggie Fisher at the Arts and Cultural Center, 732-222-7000. Second, there's two other things I wanted to talk about. The Cruise to the Jersey Shore Car Show, which was originally on Father's Day in June, will be, but was rained out, will be Sunday, August 10th, from 9:00 to 3:00. This event will include vintage cars, music, food, and more. We've been doing this for, I believe, more than 30 years. And finally, the next Family Fun Day, which is a big one, is July 30th at Branchport Park from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. The event is free and includes games, food, music, and free boat rides on the Shrewsbury River. And that's for children and adults. So, please attend any of these events. And thank you all for coming. And I'm going to stay with Public Safety Director and Business Administrator Shirley. So, if anybody who's here would like to talk, I'll be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. So, my comments are going to go along the same line. Your comments were, all of your comments were very consistent in terms of the concern that we all have for safety. And you heard all of us kind of responding consistently also. Two parts of it. One is, how do we solve the problem? And then, another part, how do we educate the community about it? I would love it and invite all of you and anyone else to follow up on what the mayor said. And please schedule the time, the first Wednesday of the month. I can give you the number again, because we announced it with the public comment. And let's have a discussion about how do you get information? You know, like, Councilman Dangler, and I think I fall in the same category as you, Councilman Dangler, I'm not big on social media. And obviously, that's a prime way that we communicate with the public. But if some of you could come, and let's talk about what ways do you get information, I think it would be very helpful, you know, all the way around. And, you know, also, we could have a conversation. We have been struggling, like every municipality is struggling with these e-bikes. Everybody's struggling with it. Let's hear your ideas and talk about it two ways. You know, what are your ideas? What are some of the ideas that we have thrown out there that we think may work and may not work? But please take us up on that offer, because it might be a way that we can actually move forward together and get some new ideas out there. And my last comment is on one of our resolutions, and that is our resolution where we are reappointing Amanda Caldwell as our city clerk, our interim city clerk. Welcome again. You're doing a great job. We love to have you as part of the team. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Thank you. Good night, everyone.